Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Dearborn Board of Education's special study session meeting for Monday. Nope, this is the wrong day. For Wednesday, March 23rd, 2022. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Barry?
Here.
Trustee Dambrojo?
Here.
Trustee Moses?
He will be a few minutes late.
Trustee Thor?
Yes.
Trustee Petrokoff?
Here.
Trustee Watts?
Here.
President McDonald?
Here. Next item, please.
Discussion, item number one, potential 2022 board. Dr. Maliko?
Okay, so good evening, everyone. I just wanted to start with just giving a brief overview. So, starting in 2020, we had started to look at the potential for coming back for another bond. Then the pandemic hit, and we all remember about a year ago with Whitmore Bowls. And so, everything was put on hold. And since then, we have still been monitoring, but obviously, the COVID was our biggest situation to deal with in the district, not only our district, but everywhere. And so, now, we continue to meet as an administrative team, and then, we hired John Silvery from the Michigan Leadership Institute to coordinate meetings with a community group that came together. And we had, you know, applicants that could apply, anyone in the community. We put it out everywhere. And then, Mr. Silvery had selected a certain number to, he had recommended to serve on the committee. The committee has been meeting since January. I went to the first meeting. I believe, there were several meetings, I believe around six to seven meetings. And Trustee Thorpe was there, representing the board to speak to the committee. And at that time, we talked to the committee about, they're an advisory group, but it would be something the board would obviously take under serious consideration, the recommendations, as has traditionally been done, to get a community input. We talked about the process a little bit, and the fact that it would be recommendations that would come forward, and that ultimately, the board would decide, and we would be looking at the possibility of a bond. Now, I mentioned COVID was the biggest thing facing our district two years ago, a year ago. I can honestly say that we know that we had students with learning loss during the online and other situations, and not only our district, but all districts. We've run some of the largest summer programs, so we know how to handle those challenges. We do have some challenges in different areas. We know social, emotional, and some of the other areas that we have to adjust and provide supports for our students. We'll continue to do that. We know about staff and teacher shortages that we're addressing. I honestly see the biggest issue that's facing this district is the infrastructure, given the age of our buildings, and the fact that the Michigan school funding system set where infrastructure, for the most part, you have to go to the taxpayers and the local communities to create upgrades. Because most of your budget that you're allocated from the state does come, you know, to the staff in the district, you know, eighty-six percent approximately. Having said that, I can also say, though, we have since the 2019 bond, since then, we had some items on that, and Mr. Wall is going to talk more about it. We've been looking to use some of our internal funding and other things to save taxpayers' money with the need that is out there with the infrastructure. That includes, you know, money from the federal funding, the ESAR dollars, from our enhancement funding, from right now, we know that the board approved the sale of the SME buildings that was initially on the 2019 bond with upgrades. And we have money in the general fund from the sale of the Howe property. So, the district administration, under the leadership of the board, has been very responsible with trying to implement and correct issues in the district for the infrastructure over that time. So, right now, I do want to thank all the members of the committee, and I'd ask them for the VIP committee to stand up and please be recognized, because we know that you put in a lot of time if you're here. I want to thank everyone if you're not here, but I would like those who served on the committee to please stand and be acknowledged. We appreciate your hard work, your dedication, and from what I was told, the honest dialogue. I just wanted to mention that no board members or the superintendent sat on the committee on purpose, because it's recommendations coming to us. And the committee acronym VIP is Vision for Infrastructure Planning, so it's not very important person, although you are all very important people to us, and we appreciate your support. I'll let David maybe make a, oh, wait, I want to also thank the two presenters here. And my understanding is you guys had your own process to select who would present the findings, Ms. Nafila Haydar and Ms. Rawa Al-Bakarit, did I say that? Ah, Briket, I apologize. So, we thank you for your time. So, we have a parent, community member, and a student, and we're so glad that we have a balanced presentation coming forward. Thank you so much. Can you give the two of them a big round of applause? I want to thank also any of the members of our team that were not voting members or deciding members of the committee, but spent a lot of time, including Mr. Wall and Mr. Musten, but all the individuals who played a part during the committee meetings and collaborating with any data that was put forward. David, would you like to add anything to that, given that you were at all of the meetings helping to coordinate?
Well, I just want to take a moment to thank Mr. John Silvery from MLI. He did an outstanding job of facilitating and moderating all of these meetings, leading the group in their discussions, able to create some good dialogue, I hope, with all of the team members that were involved in that. John was, did a great job. He had a very calm demeanor about himself at all times, and I think that his way of presenting information and presenting things to the committee helped to facilitate that dialogue. John was clear in all of his meetings, beginning at the very first one of the role of this group. He was honest in saying that this group hopefully would reach a consensus, that not everybody would agree with the final result, because it's a group of people coming together from various aspects of our community, representing parents and community members, students and business owners, young and old, east and west. And we felt that that group, having that dynamic involved, would get a really well-rounded recommendation. But again, we also know that when you bring people together, that not everybody will agree, and that's okay, as long as it's done in a respectful way. And I will say that I felt that this committee exercised the extreme respect for each other in their dialogue throughout this entire process. We were there as observers and as references for the committee to provide information and to help them. We did not take part in any of the voting or anything like that. We were merely there as a resource for that committee, so.
Trustee Barry?
I think whoever in here knows I'm a real estate agent, and in our life, it's location, location, location. I take it a step further and say disclose, disclose, disclose. And I need to disclose that my wife, Ms. Nafila Haydar, did serve on that committee, and she'll be representing us today. And we have mutual respect for the boundaries in life we live. You know, she's a community activist, I serve on this board. The agreement was not to discuss anything that happens in the meeting. I can, you know, my colleagues know me, we did not discuss anything. I was kind of looking forward to this presentation last night. We got it early this morning, and I dived right into it, and I made sure, I told her that whatever questions you have, you refer to Mr. Wall and Mr. Musten, and I just needed, I just felt like I needed to put that out there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, David, were you? Mr. Wall?
I think I'm next on the agenda, but I also want to say, the committee worked very hard, asked great questions. I don't think there was one day we did not go past the time we were supposed to. That's how dedicated they were, so I just want to also thank them for all the hard work they put in.
Absolutely, and the board thanks you too for your time and your commitment and your diligence for the process, so thank you so much. Go ahead, Mr. Wall.
All right, going on to the next agenda item, the infrastructure overview. So, I'm just going to share you a set of slides. I also gave the board a hard copy, so in case you want to take notes on it. All these slides were taken from the presentation, so this is nothing new that the VIP committee did not see, they're just aspects of the presentation over the...
Six meetings?
Six meetings. So, again, always starting off with our mission statement. So, why we're here is obviously to help students succeed in life today and in the future, so just keeping that in mind. This is just a quick outline of the buildings. Obviously, we have thirty-four buildings, average age of sixty-eight years. As you can see, we have an aging infrastructure. So, this just throws out there the number of years our buildings are in these categories. And feel free to stop me as I go along, because I'm just, most of this is review for you, but I thought it would be good just to quickly refresh it. Just giving our outline of twenty thousand seven hundred students, you know, twenty-seven hundred staff members, forty-one schools and programs. This slide is from the state, where you can see they did a study across all the states in the U.S. And those highlighted in white give no funding for infrastructure. So, just kind of show you that every state is going to be different in how they handle it, but Michigan does, as part of their funding formula, do not give us any money for infrastructure.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
It took me a minute to figure out what this meant, and maybe you want to elaborate a little bit, that the state of Michigan used to be, Dearborn was very generous, Dearborn taxpayers were very generous to the district, and whatever we needed, they provided. It's against the law right now to...
Correct. With Proposal A passing, we can no longer levy local millages for just operational purposes or for infrastructure. We have to use the referendum to actually go out for a bond issue through that process.
Okay, thank you.
No, good question, and feel free to ask questions. Just look at the types of bonds we could do, it kind of flows into this one. We can do a voted capital improvement bond, that's where we go to our constituents to raise a dollar value. And then, the debt mileage is determined on the dollar value raised and the current, you know, taxable values, so how we pay that back. We could do non-voted capital improvement bonds. Last time we did this was roughly in about 2008, nine, ten, when we upgraded our athletic facilities. We did that on our own, and basically, the general fund pays back that, those loans and interest on those types of projects. They also have a non-voted energy conservation bond, where we look at potential improvements in our infrastructure for energy savings, and those energy savings go back and pay back those bonds and the interest. We're currently working through that process with Train, and we're still going through that process where they're gathering information, so that'd be something that we will consider in the future, depending on how that all works out. And then, for the millages, you can do a building and site fund millage, where you can go up to three mills for ten years, and that's more of a pay-as-you-go type attitude. You can take the money in for every given year and then design projects. And then also, you can also do a recreation and playground millage, and that's more, as long as it's recreation-related, you can actually use those funds for both infrastructure and buildings and operational purposes. Just looking at the advantages and disadvantages, I won't read them all, but there's obviously benefits and disadvantages, depending on which way you go, so this is just a quick list of showing those. And then, what have we done? So, as you can see, in 2016, I gave you, give a history. Usually, when we have available funds, we transfer funds from our general fund to our building and site fund. On average, school districts can sometimes do anywhere from one to three percent is what they try to do, that's kind of the statewide average. As you can see, we're falling in that area. And then, starting in 2021, when obviously the pandemic hit, we generated a short surplus that year, so we were able to contribute more to the building and site fund. And in 2022, when we were online the whole year, we were able to do a larger value to, I'm sorry, I broke that up. So, in 2120, we added a little bit more. Twenty-one, we were able to do a lot more, because we were online, because the buildings weren't, you know, being used as much. And then, 22, we had to kind of fall back again, because we were back in person. So, it kind of gave you the history there. So, in 2022, we also were told that we could use ESAR funds for infrastructure purposes, as long as it dealt with the HVAC air handling type scenario. So, we put away that forty million, to set aside the forty million in the ESAR funds. Using the 2021 and 22, we are actually going to match forty million of that, out of our own building and site funds, to generate roughly about an eighty million dollar project that we can deal with infrastructure needs. This is showing our school district tax rates. As you can see, you know, we were higher in 2013 at twenty-nine point nine eight mills, and over time, that has slowly declined. Right now, our debt mills is three point five, our homestead, our vote and hold harmless homestead millage is six point one seven, and our non-homestead is eighteen mills. So, it kind of gave me a breakdown of where we're at currently on millage rates.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Just for the community's understanding, because we get asked that question a lot, will you explain the difference between the homestead and non-homestead? Because everybody thinks that that eighteen mills is coming out of...
Correct.
The homeowner's pocket, and that's not exactly how...
Yeah, there's two types of mill, mostly two types. There's some miscellaneous, you know, act, you know, special millages. But for school operating purposes, we have broken down between homestead and non-homestead. Your homestead is your primary house, the one that you have determined through your tax base to be your primary residence. So, if you have a vacation home, or apartment complexes, or the commercial industrial, those are non-homestead properties. The non-homestead properties get charged eighteen mills. The homestead properties, since we're a hold harmless district, get charged the six point one seven, and all property gets charged the debt millage. So, that three point five is across all property, both homestead and non-homestead.
Thank you.
And I apologize, I'm wearing a mask because I have a cold today, so I don't want to get anybody sick, so that's why I have a mask on. All right, this screen, so what we did as part of the VIP committee, let them know that bonding is something that districts have done for the last twenty years, because that's the way they can raise funds. So, I looked at, if you look on the far left-hand side, the number of students by some of the districts, I've taken the largest ones and some in our local area, and then, looked at what they did for bonding over the last twenty years for school improvements. So, I took the amount they did bonding, divided by the number of students. If you look on the right-hand side, that gray line kind of shows the average on a per-student basis of how much all the districts across the way, the sample, spent on bonding. The orange is what that individual district did to actually show bonding, how much they bond against the average. So, if you look at Detroit Public Schools, they have the most students, but on a per-student basis, they have bonded higher than the average by showing of the orange line, higher than the gray line. Utica Schools is less than that. You can look at ours, we're one of the lowest ones, we're probably less than, close to a third, based on our student population. You have some districts, like Ann Arbor and Plymouth Cannon, have gone way beyond what the average, what these districts have spent on bonding. So, it just kind of gives you a feeling of how some of the districts, because someone will say, well, how come Ann Arbor Schools has so much better schools than us? Their constituents in that district have made that decision to have newer schools, so they have bonded to do that process. And why do something now? Just the need for, as Dr. Michael said, the need for our infrastructure is strong. Long-term capacity, I, Mr. Mashur will be reviewing that with you here shortly. Obviously, we have security issues, we'd like to improve our technology. That's something, we have an aging infrastructure, the technology turns over so fast these days that you have to always invest more money into it, become more energy conservation, so we can actually save money internally for other purposes. And the interest rate is very low right now, so that's always a good thing to look at when you're trying to do infrastructure programs. So, what I did, I gave the VIP just a view of what we would do for, if we bonded out at the current three point five mill rates. So, you can see in the bond amount, anywhere from two hundred to two hundred forty-five thousand, two hundred fifty, depending on how long you did the actual, you know, length of the bonds. And this is at a no-mill increase, maintaining the three point five. This just shows you a pictorial of how those bonds would go. On the far left, you'll see that red line is our current millage rate. So, after twenty-two, twenty-three, that millage rate will drop down to a little over one mills for our debt millage. Then, that will maintain for a while, then in twenty-two, or twenty, thirty-two, thirty-three, we will no longer have any debt millage. And this scenario just kind of shows you, depending on which model, how it would carry forward. The average is roughly, every school district, every ten years, has a natural dip in their bonding cycle. So, that's where a lot of districts will look at that ten-year mark, as something to kind of look at, to see if they wanted to go out for another bond issue and what they could do. So, I also, some of the questions that came out of the VIP committee is, what if we raised the rate? So, what I did is give a similar sample, that if we raised it by one mill, we're going to raise anywhere from ninety to a hundred and ten million dollars for additional mill. So, just giving them a ballpark, that if they wanted to raise the millage, what kind of activities we could do with that additional mill? And that came out to about ninety to a hundred and ten million dollars for what would one mill, additional mill would be. And that's it. And again, there were many, many more slides, I just want to kind of quick-hit some of the slides to kind of give you a background, and then, I'll turn that over to, I think, Mr. Mashur, right?
Are there any questions before we move on? Trustee Thorpe?
Mr. Wall, can you remind us the difference between a state-qualified and a non-state-qualified bond?
Yep, so every school district, every entity has a credit rating, and that's done by usually Standard and Poor's, or Moody, or somebody like that. They look at the finances of the district, the stability of the district, and how their student enrollment is, their, all their assets and liabilities, and determines the credit rating. The state of Michigan being so large, they have a higher credit rating than us, but it's a very rigid style, and it's very time-sensitive going through that process, but then, you get a lower interest rate, because you're using the state's credit rating. Ours, we have done very well in the last several years, so the difference isn't as big as it used to be. So, you're looking at anywhere about a quarter of a percent higher if we use the state, if we use our rating versus the state. In the past, that rating has been more significant, that would have made a difference. So, at this point, we can go either way, because the rates aren't that much...
How much does that slow down the process using state-qualified?
You need to give them at least thirty days notice ahead of time to review it, and then, they have thirty days to actually review it, so you're talking two additional months.
Okay, which in this day and age can increase your prices that you pay.
Yes, yes.
Trustee Thorpe?
It leads into what you were just saying, the estimated interest rates are based on today's rates, not where the rates could be...
And these are very conservative, yes.
Whenever this goes forward.
Correct, and these were very conservative. Obviously, our rates are, you know, we just refinanced the additional bond under two percent. We were one point, seven, one point eight. So, the rate market is very low, but again, not knowing where the market is, by the time we do go out, they made it these very conservative rates.
Trustee Moses?
Thank you, President McDonald. I have questions about the bond term years. So, I see here, obviously, from twenty to thirty years. Can you explain why we have different number of years, and can we have less that we can pay off the bond, and, or is that, does that put a lot of...
Yeah, it all depends on what you're doing bonding for. If you're doing, like, for buses, the average useful life for a bus is seven years, so you can't bond longer than that. For a building, it's usually up to thirty years, and you use those numbers to determine that if you have a lot of need, and you want to keep to maintain the same millage rate, you would have to extend the life of how long you have for the bonds. You know, the same thing with your own house, when you look at what you can afford to pay and what money you need, you can determine to do a shorter mortgage for your own or a longer one, and the longer you go out, the lower the price is, but you could have a larger mortgage, so a similar type of scenario.
Trustee Watts?
I'm not going to have questions now, but I will at the end of the, I just want to hear the rest, but I will have questions.
Absolutely.
For Mr. Wall.
Oh, yeah, I'm here for the duration.
Just make sure you get my attention.
Yep.
I think I'm chained to the table, so I'm not going anywhere.
Follow-up question, President McDonald, thank you. So, I see that we have bonds here, but do we, are we going to see other options, like sinking funds?
Yeah, this was just what we were looking at when we were having the discussion with the VIP, the sinking fund. You're looking at roughly about three point seven, three point eight million, it could be raised on an annual basis with one sinking fund. So, obviously, if you do three, three mills the max over ten years, then it would be three times that on an annual basis.
Okay, has that seen that being popular in the recent years?
Yeah, so one of the discussions we're going to have later is short-term and long-term.
Right.
So, and then, we'll get through those processes, and I'm sure that'll come into more play of where the board would like to go on this topic.
Thank you.
Okay, continue, who's next?
I agree with Mr. Mashur coming up.
Mr. Mashur?
Good evening, everyone. Just to, excuse me, look at the projected numbers we have coming up over the next five years. We had Middle Cities gave us their enrollment analysis and projections, Plant Moran Cressa gave us theirs, Stanford gave us theirs, and then, there's mine at the bottom. Mine are usually higher than theirs, but they're also usually more accurate than theirs as well, so don't be alarmed. Not as clean as I would like, I'm going to be honest, I need to spend a little bit more time, but it's going to be roughly around there. I'd say it's within a couple hundred students at the very most. But that's kind of where we're looking to be, right around the twenty thousand, anywhere between five hundred to seven hundred mark over the next five years.
Trustee Watts?
Can you put that slide back up for one second?
I'm sorry.
So, with that, what is the current, yeah, what is the current enrollment that we have?
Twenty thousand six hundred.
Okay, and then, the, just, could you explain why, I guess, between the Middle Cities, they, I mean, they're low at nineteen four, so, and we've, you've projected twenty-six eighty-seven, so it's a difference of a thousand?
Yeah, so, they, it generally is a difference of a thousand. They are very, very conservative when they give us their numbers, they use different factors than, than we do. Even like Plant Moran, Cressa, Stanford, they all have certain variables, like they use birth rates, we use birth rates as well. They use the number of students going to charter schools, and then, they anticipate that number to go up by a certain percentage. My percentages and their percentages are not the same, so.
Do you have any historical data to show in the past, which one gives us the best idea of where it's going to hit?
Yes, mine.
Mine, yeah. You were going to say that.
And that's what I'm saying, I want to know.
With all modesty, seriously.
He has been very accurate.
And that's why I wanted to know, like, if you can have all four.
Yes, so, so really, where they're, so, the thing they don't take into account for is the number of students we have coming back to us from eighth grade to ninth grade. So, that's where the biggest change in the number is. So, we'll, we'll lose students to go, that go to private schools and sometimes charter schools, but then, they come back to us for their high school years. We also have a number for sixth grade as well, because some of our private schools only go through fifth grade, so they don't really allocate, take that into account when they're, when they're making their projections.
And then, have we taken into account what could be refugees or asylum seekers?
We do, this year's kind of tricky, because we, I really haven't received much information from Wayne County RISA as far as a number that, that they're anticipating to come in for the fall, or the, over the summer and the fall. That number usually doesn't come until probably like around May, June, then they kind of give us an idea if we should be expecting, you know, certain numbers or...
And there are still legalities in place right now, which will hamper that, so. And they're working, that may or may not get ironed out.
And they tend to try to distribute those numbers kind of evenly throughout the communities, it's not like they're all coming to one location.
Right, okay.
So, I'll give you, you know, I can provide the board with much more accurate numbers next week, I'll have some time to work on them, because we'll be on spring break, so we won't have to deal with some of the other things that we deal with.
Trustee Barry?
Yes, Mr. Mashur usually comes out, you know, closer to the real numbers that we approach, because he's in touch with the community. And yes, we have a lot of students that go to charter schools, for whatever reason, or private schools, but because of all the great opportunities that are high schools, they come back to us, that's it. So, speaking of high schools, do we have the numbers moving forward at the high school level broken down, or?
Yes, for, for this upcoming year or for all the years?
The next few years, yeah.
Yeah, I, I have that number, but like I said, I still want to play with it a little bit more, it's not, I didn't have enough time to spend on twenty-three through twenty-seven, but for twenty-two, twenty-three, it's, it's pretty accurate.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
And then, the other, the other, one other thing that we're trying to do this year is we're trying to kind of market and try to get some of our kids back. The virtual school is going to help us a lot, because we lose a lot of students that go to Creative Learning Center, Michigan, I forget what it's called, I think it's called...
Michigan Virtual Academy?
Sagan?
Michigan Virtual Academy?
Michigan Virtual, thank you very much, yes, Michigan Virtual. So, we're going to try to, Shannon Peterson, Erin McInville, who are at the virtual school, myself, are going to try to market, to try to win some of those people back and try to get them back into our system.
But a virtual student isn't going to impact the infrastructure really as much.
Correct.
Because they won't be...
Correct, yes, yes.
Trustee Thorpe?
Piggybacking on what Trustee Barry was saying, while we, overall, these numbers are showing we're holding even, is your expectation that you're going to see an increase at any of the three levels, or are those numbers all about even as what you'd expect?
So, there's a couple of things that are troubling to me as far as losing students, we're losing students sometimes to other districts, you know, now, the, for... Um, you know, now the, for us, we have to sign off on losing them to other public school districts. That number is kind of in certain pockets of our, our, uh, city is going up. So that's a little disappointing and alarming, so, but it's a reality that we have to figure out, okay, what do we do to, you know, to keep some of those students with us? So, um, did that answer your question? I'm sorry.
Well, I was just wondering where, if we think the overall count is going to stay the same, what do we think high school is going to creep up? Do we think elementary might drop?
Oh, like by level, by level. Uh, I think elementary will increase a little bit as we go. Uh, people are generally very happy with our, um, elementary schools and their children's experiences at the elementary schools. The middle schools and the high schools, that's when sometimes behavior, that type of thing, uh, becomes a little bit more of an issue for some parents where they feel like, you know, they're not one hundred percent comfortable with their children being there for whatever reason or maybe the friends that they're making, you know, the peer influences take, are something to consider for the middle school and high school. But we do get, like I said, we, we will, middle school tends to stay about level. I think elementary will go up and then high school, sometimes we, we have an increase in ninth grade, but then we have a decrease in tenth and eleventh grade.
Okay.
So that's, you know, a few of the areas that, again, Stanford, middle, middle cities and Plant Moran don't, they don't have a pulse on those types of things.
Okay.
Thanks.
But just, just for your benefit, and we did get all the Plant Moran, Stanford studies, and they did break out. It's kind of a tedious.
I have that information.
Yeah, it's a tedious read.
But I just wanted to put it out there. For the rearview audience that doesn't have.
So we do have some numbers, yeah.
Yes, yes, I know, I had his hands up, but, uh.
Um, I didn't see it, I'm sorry. Trustee Barry.
So, uh, okay, you mentioned losing students, so it sounds like reading between the lines, we're losing them at the high school level?
Yes, we lose students at the high school level.
Okay.
More so, a lot of times when they start struggling in high school, because different programs have different, um, expectations. So for us, we have twenty-three credits that you need in order to get your high school diploma. Uh, CLC, Step Up, and some of the other programs that are out there, and even some of the other public high schools out there only require twenty-one credits to graduate. So if students are falling behind, a lot of times, as opposed to trying to figure out how to make up the credits that they're missing, they'll choose an alternative path to, to get their high school diploma.
Other public schools, are they open districts?
Yeah, most, most, most public schools.
Why would we have to sign off?
Say again?
Why would we have to sign off on a student leaving?
So we sign off for the funding. So for example, if you reside in Dearborn, but you want to take your, your children to Birmingham schools, Birmingham has to send a form to us that we would have to sign off on in order for, uh, their, their school district to get the funding for that child. Okay, now if we don't sign off on it, then the school district has two choices. Their, their option is either to allow the kid to come to school for free, which usually is, they don't, or they charge the, the student tuition.
This is imagining if they leave like mid semester?
That, whenever they leave, if they leave, prior to, I'm sorry?
They leave in the beginning of the year, that's still.
Still, that we have to sign off on it in order for the other, other school district to get funding.
If they're living in our district.
Yeah.
There are students.
No, I get that, but if, after a student count day, we get that per pupil funding, I thought that's why we would have to sign off.
So, no, so, so we have to sign off for that per pupil funding, so, but the, the sign off can occur over the summer, for example. You know, so that doesn't, there is no specific timeline for it. They would send the form and then we'd have to sign off. Now, in some cases, for example, like you have, we have, uh, students who moved, let's say, to, uh, to Dearborn, but they were in their junior year at Crestwood. And they want to finish their senior year at Crestwood. So we automatically, everybody pretty much throughout the state, it's kind of a gentleman's agreement, if you will, uh, signs off on that. Sometimes you have situations where a family says, okay, well, we operate a business and, you know, I can give you one for us specifically. Uh, you know, and it's in a different county, it's about an hour away. They live in Dearborn, but they operate a business there, mom and dad run the, the, the business. So, you know, you look at the situations and then you make those decisions.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure thing.
Now, just, oh.
Just one, one more question about the census. So Dearborn, uh, since two thousand and ten was ninety-four thousand people, but it increased to a hundred and ten thousand? So that's a huge jump.
Correct.
But the school population seems like it's staying flat, so.
Two thousand and ten.
What was that?
Not since two thousand and ten, from ten to now, our, our enrollment has increased a few thousand, right?
Yes, yes, it has, yeah.
In ten, we were probably at about.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm reading the prediction wrong then. But are we predicting that we may gain, as Trustee Wall said, maybe there's more influx of immigration that we perhaps may have that we are not expecting? Did you put that into consideration?
We do when we get those numbers, when we get an idea from Wayne County as far as new immigrants, new refugees coming to the country, then yes, that is just, uh, projections for us. So if you want to go back to prior to, uh, uh, President Trump being in office, that was a lot of immigration those years prior to him coming into office. When he became president, then those numbers kind of.
Right, yeah.
And then with COVID nineteen, of course.
Yeah.
That changed everything, so there's a lot, lot more to.
So now, yeah, there is, there is a chance of, of influx of immigration right now that things, obviously pandemic is wearing off and perhaps, uh, immigration laws are getting.
Right, so like, so one of the things that we're taking into consideration, so we, and that's not just Dearborn or even Wayne County, the entire state, the entire country really, there's a lot of students who during the pandemic, uh, like have not been accounted for since post-pandemic, if you will. So this year, for example, we, you know, we worked with, uh, the state and worked with a couple of different organizations to try and track down students that were not only not going to school in Dearborn, but they weren't going to school anywhere. They were not accounted for anywhere in, in the state. So we're trying to still, and there's, you know, you figure a, a city like ours, as Trustee Moszep was saying, with a high population, you, you know, there's a lot of students still to be accounted for, so. Um, my, you know, projections are going to be a little skewed this year, but we'll do our best.
That was the question that I had too, about the missing students. Um, Trustee Barry, did you?
We can discuss this topic for another hour, so it's real quick, I'll address, uh, Trustee Moszep's comments. No, you're not reading those graphs wrong. The census is done every ten years. Well, Mr. Monsieur in his office, I mean, it's, it's real time. I mean, two, three times a year, they're getting these counts, so we knew what direction things were going. The census only told the city how many, you know, what the population increased over a ten-year period.
Correct, yes.
Yeah, okay, it's, no, the graphs are right, I just want to make sure you know that.
Yeah, usually my initial projections don't even come out until April fifteen tax day, but this year I was, uh, I was bullied by some of my colleagues.
No bullying should be allowed.
But I make, but I'll still make at least three more adjustments to the projection between now and June.
Dr. Maleko wanted to say something, but, um, I'm going to call on Trustee.
And I just, I just had a quick comment too. The, the one thing about our community is, is we're pretty much landlocked and built. So the availability for, you know, new housing doesn't really exist. So, uh, the numbers that we have here, living here, are basically, have been fairly stable. I think some of the census differences were, there was a lot of undercounting in the past, and they finally got a handle on getting a better feel for people who weren't recognized, but were actually here because we really don't have the ability to expand new neighborhoods. And we do not have any land that we're going to be building an entire neighborhood on to, um, house new families. And so the housing situation is pretty stable, which is why our numbers have.
But the transancy is, is not, so.
That hasn't changed, no, yeah, I know, I know.
Right.
That moved back and forth, yeah, we've always had that.
Our city have very transient neighborhoods and like River Oaks is always one that's difficult to kind of pinpoint. Gear Park has become one. Gear Park used to be very stable. Now it's become very transient, a lot more rental homes, I'm assuming in that area, is, is probably why Trustee Barry would know that better than me. Uh, but yes, we have a few schools now that, uh, population is fluctuating a lot. Becker, for example, they were higher, like they're usually in the mid two fifties, now it's kind of down to two twenty, you know, two ten, somewhere around there.
Well, well, what I was really saying, yeah, there's always a, a fluctuation as neighborhoods transition in age.
Correct.
You have, you have the rollover. That's not what I'm, I'm talking, I'm talking about that.
Trustee.
In, in order, a large, you, we don't, we don't have new building going on where you're going to have a, a new, a new neighborhood drop up with a whole new group of families moving in.
Some, but there are actually now, as we speak, construction going on at both the Fairland Mall. And there's a lot of conversation about converting the high into, uh, affordable housing.
I'm not sure how many children will be.
I know, but.
I, I, we have to work with the realities now.
Absolutely, and for the selling of a lot of land, but I'm saying, uh, you, the, the, the family size will definitely vary as we move forward.
And that's Mr. Monsieur's job and he does it very well.
Well, we can stay in this discussion for hours, but that's not the focus.
Just a couple of quick questions.
Trustee Wall.
So you had mentioned that there was a percentage of high school students that would drop out. Do we know on average what that is per year? I guess, who's leaving and then who's coming, like, what is the percent that's leaving versus those that are coming in?
Yeah, we, we, there's, uh, it's different by school. I don't know them off the top of my head, but yeah, I can, I can easily get you those numbers. And most of them are not dropping out, they're just choosing an, an alternative educational program.
Sorry, I, I didn't mean drop out.
That, that's fine.
Okay, um, and then do we also know over the past years, and you were saying the pre-Trump era, what percentage of children that we would receive that would enter the school district from, say, they were refugees or asylum seekers? Do we have an idea of what that was, or was it just fluctuating depending on?
No, it fluctuated, but you, you know, you would figure, you'd allocate anywhere between two and three percent of our, our, our typical population would be to increase by that, that number.
Okay, and then you said that this year because of COVID that you were trying to track down the students. How many of them were you able, I guess, what was the total amount and then how many were we able to bring back?
Uh, we brought back, it was, I want to say in the mid-sixties if I remember right, but it was, uh, not nearly the number we thought we would, uh, we would be able to, to get back.
What was the total number that?
Over five hundred.
But you're still working on that.
Okay.
Not me, no.
No, okay.
No, we, we, uh, the, the, the group that we worked with, they, they're, you know, honestly, they, I haven't been in touch with them in probably a month, maybe a little bit longer. I think they, you know, they tried to figure out as much as they could. You know, sometimes people from our area especially leave overseas, so it's hard to kind of track them down. Uh, some we tracked down to different charter schools that were out of the area. So those are a little bit more difficult to track, just because charter schools do things a little bit differently, as you all know, so.
That's been a concern of mine since we reopened with the pandemic. I knew that we had some students that were just basically had disappeared and trying to find out where they were to make sure that they're receiving it, proper education is important.
I, I think next year we'll get a lot of the ones that are still here. And that's because I think the, the element of fear has kind of dissipated a little bit. I think people are more comfortable with being out and allowing their kids to go to school and so on, whereas before it was, you know, as everybody knows, it was a lot of panic and so on.
Yeah, and the unknown.
I'm okay.
Oh, you're sure?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll just say I thank Mr. Monsieur for the great, and he does give us very accurate figures every year.
I appreciate you allowing me to sit next to two legends here. My, my night will only go downhill from here, that's the only problem.
So next we have the Vision Infrastructure Committee, Ms. Hyder and Ms.? Thank you. I'll get it. So we'll turn it over to them. Again, we appreciate your time and all the committee members that serve.
Thank you. Good evening, Board, Trustees, President McDonald and Superintendent Maleko. Thank you for having us tonight. Uh, my name is. Hyder, and I served on the VIP Committee as a parent, a community member and a business owner in the city and, uh, PTA member. And Ruwan and I were selected by our peers to deliver the recommendations of the committee after weeks of work and surveys. And I'd like to start with my co-presenter, Ruwan.
Uh, hi, my name is, uh, Rowley Verikat, and I served as a student at the VIP Committee. I'm a junior at Forsen High. So the agenda for today is how the VIP Committee was composed of in our meeting history and the key takeaways at the end. So how it was composed of was that there was seventy-two applicants from, um, the whole, like, city, and it was narrowed down to forty-three, um, members. And that was selected by the Michigan Leadership Institute Consultants. And it was balanced to include a mix of students, employees, parents of current students, parent, uh, parents of former students, uh, business owners and people that work in Dearborn and community members. And it was a mix of, uh, there was a mix of ages and genders, and around thirty-five regular members attended the meetings. The ones that were not, uh, those applicants that were not, um, selected were asked to serve as, uh, key communicators. So the, um, so the VIP Committee is, uh, were the members of the committee who received, um, information from meetings and informed recommendations. The key communicators were the members, um, who did not participate in the VIP Committee directly, but were asked to share information from the VIP Committee with the stakeholders. So they were the ambassadors of getting the work, uh, the word out from our committee, uh, meetings. So the, uh, the first meeting was on January thirteen, where a slideshow was presented to the committee about what it takes to run a district in terms of money and staffing. Uh, we talked about some things that were resolved using the district's, um, budget, but not everything was resolved. And we learned how the majority of the budget went into staffing, uh, staffing, and that left not, not, that left not enough money for infrastructure and things that a bond would cover. And then we also discussed the twenty nineteen bond proposal and how it failed and what we would do differently for the upcoming bond proposal to pass. The second meeting was on January twenty, where it was a building tour. The committee was split into two groups. One went to, uh, some of the east side schools and the other went to the west schools. Uh, those, um, schools were the Gear Park Elementary, Edsel Ford High School, uh, Honeyford Elementary, and then McCullough Unis, K to eight, Lowry, K to eight, and then Forsen High School. The third meeting was on January twenty-seven. Uh, we heard from a number of principals at the elementary school level, uh, middle, middle, middle school level and high school level and leaders in the building about their perspectives on what their schools need. Um, we heard and discussed about the future needs of the schools. And a student, like, at the discussion, sadly felt that, um, the hallways were very crowded at school times. And, uh.
So, okay, for me, you're doing an amazing job.
Thank you.
I can see it's starting to involve anxiety. Just do us a favor, push that microphone away.
Oh, sorry.
Continue the amazing job, please.
Thank you.
VIP, uh, February tenth is next.
Thank you. Uh, the committee had more discussion after that and requested the, uh, survey be sent out to staff that are in the buildings on a daily basis and experience firsthand what the needs are and also to the community members. The fourth meeting was on February ten, where, um, the district and consultants presented to the committee with a list of needs. That list included estimated costs. The estimated costs came from construction, uh, construction consultants that were, uh, car construction, Plant Moran, and the architect integrated design solutions. After we discussed estimate, estimated cost, um, we talked about funding options such as sinking funds, Esther Funds, General Funds and bond proposals. The last meeting that, um, the last meeting that we had as the old community members was, um, on February twenty-four, where we reviewed the results from the staff and community members survey. And then based on those results, we talked about why it's important for us to have, uh, this bond proposal. And then committee members advocated for needs presented as well as needs that they personally ident- identified. And then, uh, at the end of the meeting, uh, the committee members took a survey to re- rank the needs that were brought up. Last one is that, um, the, the first question that the survey was, uh, like, asked the committee members was that if they felt that there was a need for a bond proposal. Ninety-two percent of the thirty, uh, thirty-seven, um, responses said yes, eight percent abstained, and nobody said no.
Okay. Following that, uh, survey question to see if we need, to see if we needed a bond proposal or not, thank you. Um, we were able to continue the discussion to see if the committee wanted to vote to maintain, um, the current three point five mils that are currently levied or increase the number of mils, um, to a higher mil, higher than three point five. And as you can see in the, um, slide, that sixty-three percent of the committee members wanted to maintain the three point five and thirty-three percent wanted to maintain the three point five or higher. And only three percent said neither of the above. Uh, we discussed how mils are calculated and how they would affect taxpayers depending on the assessed value of their homes. Um, and then there was, among many survey questions, there was a discussion about new buildings versus renovating old buildings. And as you can see, um, new buildings and renovating old buildings seem to climb to the top of needs, um, according to the survey. This is a very color-coded, um, average ranking of what the VIP members wanted. Um, we, we did take a lot of surveys and you can see, obviously, the, the bathroom's rated at nine. Um, we, we did take a lot of surveys and you can see, obviously, the, the bathrooms rated at nine, nine-point-eight and down. So these ratings are based on importance. Um, so you can see that we needed expansion of programs, new buildings, bathrooms, additional classrooms in some places, steam labs and STEM labs, um, electrical, just so many things that are needed by the district right now. Um, and then we carried on to another meeting on March tenth. We, I believe the committee said we would have this meeting if we needed it. Um, at that time, uh, we were presented with three options, three renewal options. Um, and I think that's the, not sure if you have that, the. Yeah, if you click on three renewal options, you can see what those options are. They would be heavy infrastructure and light new construction or additions, um, mixed infrastructure and new construction or additions, light infrastructure and heavy new construction or additions. And these three options were looked at by the committee in terms of what costs would come with each option, and we were able to vote and rank them first, second and third choice. At that meeting, we also discussed, um, the committee weighed in on support for a second bond proposal estimated at one-point-eight mills for an estimated one-hundred-and-eighty-eight million dollar new high school. Now, the committee had that discussion and they felt that a second ballot proposal would not pass. And we did vote on that, in future slides you'll see what that, what that vote looked like. And that was not to specify if we needed a high school or not, that was just to say, would we go out for a second ballot proposal for a high school? Oh, here's the, this is the graphic I was telling you about, about the different types of, um, renewal options. And you can see that these numbers, um, are approximate, we were told that they are approximate, not solid at all. Uh, we could not, at the, at the time, we couldn't get a detailed price list for every single item. Uh, it would have been nice to have one, but that was impossible at the time, and we know that in the future we'll be able to see what every individual item will cost. So when we voted on the three items, these are, this is what the results looked like. We voted three times to see how they would rank, and you can see that, um, the first and second option were prevalent there. Oh, that's okay, the colors, it's okay. Um, and these are the results, um, and if you look at this slide, I, it looks kinda backwards, but the lowest number is what ranked highest. Um, so, one for top choice, two for second and three for third. So heavy infrastructure and light new construction and additions was the number one choice by the committee. And then mixed infrastructure, new construction and additions was the second, and they were pretty close in terms of numbers. So this is going back to the question about a bond proposal for a hu- fourth high school. Um, I will repeat, this was not about whether we needed a fourth high school or not, this was about whether we would go out for a second bond proposal or even have the, a second question on the same ballot about a fourth high school. And the committee had mixed feelings, there was discussion between the committee members prior to voting. So we all were able to hear each other's opinions and ask a lot of questions before we voted. And this is how the vote came out. There was only, um, ten people in support of a second bond proposal, three people abstained. So the key takeaways from, from this, um, committee, we've been meeting since January, there was a lot of discussion and a lot of questions and really, really good questions, the committee was very diverse and the questions were very diverse. Um, the diff- the district has some significant infrastructure needs. Um, but even after utilizing the ester funds, we still don't have the necessary funding to address the needs that were identified. Um, ninety-two percent of the committee members indicated that they would go for a second ba- for a bond proposal. Sixty-three percent voted to maintain the three-point-five mills currently being levied and thirty-three percent committed, uh, of the committee voted to increase the number of mills to higher than three-point-five. And ninety-seven percent of the committee voted to recommend at least a three-point-five mill bond or more. Um, so infrastructure, safety and security ranked as the highest priorities, as you saw on previous slides. Um, there is support for a new high school that rated at seven-point-four on the importance scale of a one to ten. But mixed opinions were there regarding adding it as a separate ballot proposal. And the committee put in a lot of time and energy, you know, in our evenings, we spent a lot of time, we had a lot of good, um, good discussions, and we hope, we know that the, the final decision is up to the board. But we do hope that you take our recommendation into consideration, and we're here if you need us. Thank you.